We're also joined by our Chair, Bill Best. So glad to see him. And before we get into any other business, I do want to recognize Dr. Garudy for his gift of the victory statue. Ron, thank you for that. I think it fits with our theme today, among the things that we'll talk about, and really thank you for that generosity. I'd like to ask the Secretary if she would review the call.
Good afternoon.
Before we begin, I'd like to welcome members of the public to this open meeting, but also request that our audience respect the meetings based on the Board of Trustees and remain in the audience section so that the university can be able to efficiently conduct this business and ensure other members of the public can hear the proceedings. Pursuant to public rule of nineteen seventy five, chapter two thirty one, of the Public Meetings Act, public notice of this meeting was filed on June thirteen, two thousand and eighteen with the Office of the Secretary of the State of New Jersey, the newspaper, which is the Terry Hall Courier-Post, the New Brunswick News Tribune, and the New York Star-Ledgers. Public notice of the meeting was posted in following university libraries, the Alexander Library in New Brunswick, the Dana Library in Newark, and the Rossum Library in Camden. In addition, notice of this meeting has been posted on the Rutherford website through governing boards. You've all seen the meeting agenda and materials. Does anyone have a conflict of interest to disclose to this room?
Secretary Oliver, excuse myself for the bond issue due to my employment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm now going to check the call on the phone. Do you have Mike DeHane?
Yeah, come here.
Welcome. Senator Louis Hall.
Yes, good afternoon.
Bob Mortensen.
Yes, good afternoon.
Tullo, Oyu Kande. Pat Natsigal. Ken Schmidt.
I am here.
Doug Stevenson.
Yes, I am here.
Can I ask who just came on the call?
Rob Wilton.
I'm sorry, didn't hear that.
Hey, I'm on the call.
Okay. Is there anyone else who I did not call on the call?
Ron Wilton.
Hi, Ron Wilton. Anybody else?
Anyone.
Okay. I'm just going to remind everyone, please mute your phones until it is time for you to speak to help with the background voice. Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to call your attention to the meeting minutes that will go to the portal and ask whether there's any additions or corrections. If not, I would ask for a motion.
So.
Oh, no.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I don't.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, I'm going to call on Mr. Tolasto to present a memorial resolution and also ask Dr. Dougherty to assume Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let it be recorded in deep sorrow that Felix Emmbeck, a loyal son of Rutgers and longtime member of the Board of Trustees, died on March twenty sixth, two thousand and nineteen at the age of ninety-three. Felix first graduated from the university in nineteen forty-nine with a Bachelor of Science degree at the School of Business in Newark. He later received an MBA degree in nineteen fifty-three from the Graduate School of Management, which hanged him along this year in nineteen eighty-six. Throughout all the years with his affiliation with Rutgers, Felix gave a lifetime of work for the benefit of his alma mater, clearly demonstrating in abiding commitment to uphold the highest values in the advancement of higher education. He was a sterling example of philanthropy and volunteerism. Felix was a committed trustee from nineteen seventy-seven to nineteen ninety-four, providing advice through his work on nearly every committee throughout those years, as well as during his six terms as Vice Chair of the Board. In recognition of his many years of exemplary service, he was named a Trustee Emeritus in nineteen ninety-six. Felix also served as a member of the Board of Governors from nineteen ninety-one to ninety-six, and was an active member of the Board of Overseers of Rutgers University Foundation, receiving a lifetime Member Emeritus status in two thousand and four. Having led numerous financial and mortgage companies, most notably as Chairman Emeritus and consultant to Chase Home Mortgage, Felix gave freely at his vast knowledge of financial matters and was instrumental in the mid-nineties when he chaired the campaign to build a new Rutgers Stadium. The deck presidential suite adjacent to the stadium was named in his honor with his wife, Doris, for their support of Rutgers athletics. In nineteen ninety-eight, Rutgers University Alumni Association inducted Felix into Rutgers Hall of Distinguished Alumni, which, as you know, is the highest honor bestowed upon alumni. In two thousand and one, he was honored with the Alumni Imperatorius Service Award. It is resolved, therefore, that as an expression of the Board's grateful remembrance of Felix Beck's dedication and service to Rutgers, the State University of New Jersey, this memorial resolution shall be recorded in the minutes of the Board of Trustees, and a copy shall be sent to his family, along with our heartfelt deepest condolences. Board of Trustees, Rutgers University, June nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Madam Chair, if you will, I wanted to just take a few minutes to share a few recollections of Felix. I first met him when I was the newest member of the Board of Trustees, and he was one of the senior members. And what stands out in my mind is how willing he was to share his insights, his knowledge, especially with those members of the Board of Trustees who really didn't know much about what the responsibilities were in those days. He was truly a gentleman's gentleman. In the business world, he was somewhat of a visionary. Felix started out with the Margaret Redden Insurance Agency in Perth, Illinois, New Jersey, back in the fifties. And as time wore on, some of you may not know this, but when you applied for a mortgage in the fifty-sixties, sixty-s seventies, there was only one type of mortgage you could get, and that was a fixed rate mortgage. Felix invented the adjustable rate mortgage. It was Felix who basically started the industrial hit mort, which today is one of the main stages of borrowing to buy a house or a home. Second story I remember is that Felix and his wife Doris were very dedicated and really were inseparable, always together, at Rutgers events and also political events. Doris, his wife, was mayor of South Orange for about twenty years, so she would drag him to a number of political events. And I remember one of the events Felix had met someone, and the person asked Felix what he did for a living, and he said he was the chauffeur for the mayor of South Orange. The last story has to do with Felix's son. Felix and Doris had two sons, I believe, and one of the sons decided that he wanted to embark on a career of sports broadcasting and wanted to be a color commentator for sports events. And Felix wasn't too sure that that was kind of a lucrative field for him to get into, because very competitive, but his son went on to not only capture a position in that field, but he actually got a job as a color commentator with ESPN. His name is Bruce Deck, some of you may have seen him. And one of the happiest moments in Felix and Doris's life was when Bruce became the color commentator for Rutgers University football and basketball games. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries. Before I read the resolution, I just want to take one minute of your time to express some of my own thoughts about our Chair. Over the past two years, I've had the pleasure of getting to know Mary versus our other vice chair and then his chair. I didn't know her very well prior to that, but in these two short years, I've appreciated her leadership, thoughtfulness, and wisdom. We've had many discussions while she's been traveling on New Jersey Transit, going to and from New York, Philly, home, Rutgers, and I've even heard her get shut in the quiet car. Sorry, Mary. Mary's always had time for me, and I know she's always found time to talk with any of you if you've had an issue or a problem that you wanted to discuss. These are just some of the qualities that we need in the Chair, and I'm humbled that I'm following her. Mary, I'm just working with you, but I'll always know that if I need you, you'll be there, as I will be there for you. Now, whereas Rutgers State University of New Jersey has benefited from your selfless service in the Board of Trustees since two thousand and thirteen, when you were inducted as a Charter Trustee, and whereas in fulfilling the trustee's advisory role, your financial acumen, thoughtful guidance, and unwavering integrity proved invaluable to the Board of Governors Committee on the audit, and whereas as Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, and two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, you assumed the reins of the trustee's philanthropy efforts and propelled those efforts forward, achieving one-hundred percent board member giving each year and increasing giving to student need based on annual aid through the Rutgers Assistant Grants. And whereas the Board again looked to your vice counsel, when it elected you Chair of the Board of Trustees, entrusting your to shepherd the implementation of the recommendations in the Report of the Task Force on Student Aid, and you answered the call with a dynamic vision to change the culture of the Board and establish the Task Force on Philanthropy and the Task Force on Legislative Engagement. And whereas communication, understanding, and judicious reasoning, combined with an acute understanding of the role of the Board of Trustees, have been the hallmarks of your tenures Chair, as you made every effort to listen to members, but to also communicate with them individually and collectively between meetings. And whereas your term as Charter Trustee and Chair of the Board of Trustees will come to a close on June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Rutgers State University of New Jersey warmly and appreciatively thanks Mary I DiMartino for her service to the Board, and be it further resolved that Mary I DiMartino will continue to enjoy our highest esteem and that her colleagues look forward to reaping the benefits of her experience and inspiration as she continues to serve her alma mater as a member of the Board of Governors. Board of Trustees, Rutgers State University. May I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? And all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Before I read the resolution, I just want to take one minute of your time to express some of my own thoughts about our Chair. Over the past two years, I've had the pleasure of getting to know Mary versus our other vice chair and then his chair. I didn't know her very well prior to that, but in these two short years, I've appreciated her leadership, thoughtfulness, and wisdom. We've had many discussions while she's been traveling on New Jersey Transit, going to and from New York, Philly, home, Rutgers, and I've even heard her get shut in the quiet car. Sorry, Mary. Mary's always had time for me, and I know she's always found time to talk with any of you if you've had an issue or a problem that you wanted to discuss. These are just some of the qualities that we need in the Chair, and I'm humbled that I'm following her. Mary, I'm just working with you, but I'll always know that if I need you, you'll be there, as I will be there for you. Now, whereas Rutgers State University of New Jersey has benefited from your selfless service in the Board of Trustees since two thousand and thirteen, when you were inducted as a Charter Trustee, and whereas in fulfilling the trustee's advisory role, your financial acumen, thoughtful guidance, and unwavering integrity proved invaluable to the Board of Governors Committee on the audit, and whereas as Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, and two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, you assumed the reins of the trustee's philanthropy efforts and propelled those efforts forward, achieving one-hundred percent board member giving each year and increasing giving to student need based on annual aid through the Rutgers Assistant Grants. And whereas the Board again looked to your vice counsel, when it elected you Chair of the Board of Trustees, entrusting your to shepherd the implementation of the recommendations in the Report of the Task Force on Student Aid, and you answered the call with a dynamic vision to change the culture of the Board and establish the Task Force on Philanthropy and the Task Force on Legislative Engagement. And whereas communication, understanding, and judicious reasoning, combined with an acute understanding of the role of the Board of Trustees, have been the hallmarks of your tenure as Chair, as you made every effort to listen to members, but to also communicate with them individually and collectively between meetings. And whereas your term as Charter Trustee and Chair of the Board of Trustees will come to a close on June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Rutgers State University of New Jersey warmly and appreciatively thanks Mary I DiMartino for her service to the Board, and be it further resolved that Mary I DiMartino will continue to enjoy our highest esteem and that her colleagues look forward to reaping the benefits of her experience and inspiration as she continues to serve her alma mater as a member of the Board of Governors. Board of Trustees, Rutgers State University. May I have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And the motion carries. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, and Jim, thank you for your very warm words. I enjoyed working with you and with everyone on this board. It has been truly an honor and really a pleasure, and it's, I know I'm not going too far away, but it is bittersweet today for me. Thank you all for your own counsel to me and your friendship and guidance. I think all of us together really make a difference here, and I truly appreciate that. We'll move on, and I'm going to call on the President, who is going to give us an update on the strategic plan.
I'm going to do this a little differently and actually get up here and talk rather than sitting down with a microphone, so. Ed?
All ready.
All right. I appreciate you reorganizing yourself a little bit, because we only have one screen. This one back here is so small, and in order to be able to see it, we've got to put the staff up on the left-hand side and have you hopefully in a position to see this. So this is in response to a request from the Board to give an update of progress to this strategic plan. I comment when I come to board meetings, and people don't really know what's related to the strategic plan and what's not. So what I'm going to do today is specifically talk about the strategic plan itself and try to link everything in that we've been doing to the strategic plan to show you the kinds of progress that we have been able to make. So let me just go ahead and remind you that about two thousand and fourteen, we had already brought you and B and J into the university and completed that process of integration, but we hadn't had a strategic plan done for the university for a considerable period of time. We're not clear how many years, but it was decades. So we set about a university-wide exercise, brought in groups from around the university, talked to university-wide fora to develop a strategic plan for the overall university. And in this, remember, we're talking about a plan that was actionable, not one that's going to sit on the shelf, one that we could look at as more of a tactical plan and execute within a period of five years. That's what we said we were going to do. Well, it's been five years, and it's time for a look back and see how we did it. I just want to remind you that at the same time, immediately after we finished this strategic plan, the chancellors led strategic planning exercises on their own units, because from each of our chancellor-led units, there were specific visions for where they were going to go, what they wanted to accomplish, that didn't necessarily fit in, that, no, they fit into it, but didn't necessarily have an explicit place in the overall plan. So you have been hearing from the chancellors about their strategic plans and updates to them when you go to the campuses in Camden and Newark or in RBHS. So I'm going to focus just on the overall university's strategic plan. If you happen to have a copy, you can actually follow through it, because I'm going to be telling you the things that we said we were going to do and asking you whether we actually accomplished it. So let's see, how do we get this figured out? First of all, you remember we had an aspiration for Rutgers to be broadly recognized as among the nation's leading public universities, not to become it, we felt we already were, but to be recognized as being there. And that meant being preeminent in research, teaching, and service to the community, so that all of those had to be part of where we were going. So we set up four columns of strategic priorities: Building the Faculty Excellence; Transforming the Student Experience; Enhancing Our Public Prominence; and Visioning Tomorrow's University. And we organized our goals under those columns. Those are the things that we thought were going to drive the university upwards. And then we also recognized there were foundational elements that had to be maintained or strengthened or broadened across the university if we were going to succeed, and those are the things that we call the foundational elements. So I'm going to want to address those two groups of items that are in the plan and see how we did comparing to that. We also talked about integrating academic themes. These were courses and centers and programs that we wanted to put in place that would sort of knit the concepts together. I'm not going to talk about those today, because they're just too many and too much to talk about there, and they're more academic course here, of course, there. So I'll come back to talk about that in some other junk. I'm going to focus on the two big areas in the segment. So let me take it a step at a time here. Let's start out with building faculty excellence. We recognize that we can't be an outstanding university without an outstanding faculty, and it was our job to continue down that path. In the last five years, we've hired over fifteen hundred new full-time faculty, fifteen hundred, and the number per year has been going up. More importantly, we've hired those faculty in the areas that we identified in the strategic plan as being the ones that we wanted to emphasize as we grew the university. So if you crosswalk between where that spider diagram was in the strategic plan, the areas that we weren't hitting at our weight, that we needed to improve, those are the areas that we've been recruiting to, but we also recognized the need to maintain our strength in the humanities, and we committed money to do that, and a significant chunk of our hires have been done in response to that need to maintain the strength in the humanities. But it's more than just bringing new faculty in general to Rutgers, it's bringing the very best and brightest to Rutgers and making sure those who are already here, who are the best and brightest, are recognized. The first thing we saw that we needed to do was increase the number of endowed chairs, because endowed chairs are the currency of the realm in academia. We were by far the lowest in the AAU and far away the Big Ten in total number of endowed chairs. We focused on that, and we were able to double, more than double, our endowed professorships in the last five years from forty-one to eighty-nine, and in addition, I established another thirty Henry Rutgers professorships funded from the president's strategic funds that functioned in exactly the same way, allowing us to bring to Rutgers about seventy new faculty who were at the very top of their game, very top of their game, and in that group also to retain some of our current faculty who we were in danger of losing because they were being coached by other universities. We also wanted to promote the internationally distinguished faculty that we have and to recruit internationally distinguished faculty in this process. And looking back to two thousand and twelve until now, we've increased the number of national academy members from thirty-four to fifty-four on our faculty over that period of time. Some of those were people we had that needed to be promoted and whose memberships needed to be pushed. Many of them were recruited here to Rutgers to join what we were doing, because they were excited about the opportunities. They saw things changing, they saw things happening, they wanted to be part of it. We also were pushing our faculty in terms of their own recognition. The list on the right is just a partial one, but I can tell you that the first three on there are either recognized as being Nobel equivalents or immediate precursors to a Nobel, like the Laster Award. And I always want to point out Greg Pardla, who's one of my Henry Rutgers professors, who has won the Pulitzer Prize for Poetry down in Camden. So we have a distinguished list of faculty that's growing. It's part of what makes the Rutgers reputation. It's part of what we're evaluated on when you look at us in our ratings. We also have major, major commitment to diversity. You know that four years ago, I started a twenty-two million dollar program to improve our diversity, which we thought was not really where it should be, and recently I committed another twenty million dollars from this presidential funds up to twenty-four to continue this process. It's the biggest single commitment from my presidential strategic funds. Now, what you have to understand when you think about diversity, you can't go out and hire diverse faculty. It's illegal. You can't say, "Well, we're just going to hire minorities." You can't do that. So you have to change the culture of how faculty are hired, about how they're recruited, about what the search committee looks like, what the pool looks like, and how you take care of those faculty after they're here. The second thing is it's a slow process. If we put one-hundred percent of our recruitments in any given year that I showed you before, one-hundred percent of them were minority recruitments, it would change the percentage of minorities on our faculty by around one percent, because we have so many faculty. So this is a process that will take many years, but I can tell you, when I look at this and I see that New Brunswick went from five-point-six when we started this program to six-point-eight, and RBHS from five-point-four to seven-point-one, Newark already way up there, and Camden coming along, those are major changes in our diversity that you should be proud of. It took a lot of work to get that to happen. We stay on that trajectory over the next five or six years, and we'll be where we want to be. Moving on to the next strategic column, the next strategic priority, transforming the student experience. This is the are-you-screw issue that everybody talked about a lot out here. Many of you know about that, and heard about it at graduation. What have we been able to do about it? Again, we had a whole bunch of initiatives. The first one was to create at Rutgers honors columns that would help to keep the thirty-thousand or so students who graduate from high school in New Jersey and who leave every year to go to college elsewhere, to keep the best and brightest here and to attract some of the best and brightest from outside of Rutgers to come here, because we know that they'll tend to stay in the state, and that's what we want, but we also want them at our university. We have the Rutgers Honors College up and running. We now have had four years, the first graduation class graduated this year, so we now have about two thousand students on the New Brunswick campus who probably would not have been at Rutgers, certainly, or in New Jersey if we hadn't had this program up until now. And in Newark, with Nancy Cantor's leadership, a different kind of honors columns, the honors living and learning community is about to take off. Already has enrolled students, but is about to grow exponentially. Bringing students in not just based on their SAT scores or their high school grades, but on their ability to succeed in spite of challenged backgrounds. Very labor-intensive, every one of these students undergoes multiple interviews over a several-day period to fill the class. The new honors and learning, honors living and learning community building will open this fall. It will eventually have capacity for four hundred students. This has already been recognized around the country as a really novel and very valuable way to go for honors columns. I've just showed you a couple of the national articles that have been listed written about it. And Nancy has been successful in convincing Prudential to provide her with a ten-million-dollar gift to act as an endowment for the scholarship aid for this new program, and that gift was just announced two weeks ago, so we're really all delighted for this. And down in Camden, we have another honors program, not a facility, because we don't have the residential facilities there, but that's been in place for a number of years, and Chancellor has us been growing that. Other things that we set in our strategic plan, we're going to educate these kids. We came to the conclusion that we have a lot of great teachers, a lot of great information, but we could be moving the students around to get to every class we wanted to get to. So we talked about a transformational approach of telepresence classrooms. I've told you about this before. We have been building these at two levels, one level capable of handling two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred students in a course at a time, another level handling fifty to sixty in a course at a time, totally immersive, so that independent of where you're sitting at either location, you will see the same instructor, have the same experience, you will see everybody in the other classroom, they will all see you, and you can ask your questions and interact with the instructor. At the top is one of the big classrooms, like the one we have at Mike Ryman, and over at Cook Douglas, and now down in the nursing building at Camden. The bottom one shows the two halves very well of one of the smaller classrooms. You can see the two semicircles in that classroom, and at the remote classroom, everybody can see everybody else, everybody can talk to everybody else. And we're adding to these every year, very high acceptance from the students and from the faculty, their books completely. Can't get a slot in them if you want to teach them. The other thing we've been doing is to look at active learning classrooms. Instead of having students just sitting in a classroom and taught in a didactic way, we want students participating, engaged in the learning process, and the active learning classrooms are doing that. They're just full of these large monitors. The monitors are like whiteboards, the students work in pods with computers and internet access. They can write on things that appear on the monitors, they can mine data, put it together, do a presentation on the monitor. It's very interactive, very collaborative. We have eight of these up and running right now, and we're adding to that with each year. The next thing is making it easier to be a student, and this is what we're really talking about. We've gone ahead over a three-year period and moved to a single learning management system, Canvas, in place of all the other ones that we've been using at the same time across the university. This is now the common modality for the entire university. We're putting in place, we have put in place, and we're running for the final shadow cycle now, we'll go active next year, a computerized system for course scheduling for all of our students, all of our first-year students. This is not just in New Brunswick, it's at all our universities. And really, the primary goal here is to make sure that they have access to the courses that they need to graduate, shorten their time of graduation, because we have problems with students who enroll in one course and they can't get the second course they need They can take care of their courses, they can pay bills, they can look at their personal charges, they can check their financial aid, they can do any of that. This has been a huge hit. It's used by over ninety-eight percent of our students right now, and in the first ten months of operation, we've had over six million hits on the system. To the point now where we're stepping back a little bit from building the physical one-stop shops because that'll look like we're going to need them, like the same way we did before. We can get it all done in this way, this is the way students do their business, this is what they want. What we do see is we don't see the lines at registration, so it's certainly working. On top of all this, we made a commitment to access and affordability. We said in the strategic plan that we would do these things, but we would respect the diversity of our students, both socio-economically and ethnically. And we've been able to do that, even though we are a high tuition, high discount school. If you look at the students who are the most needy with family incomes below fifty thousand dollars, they pay practically nothing to come to Rutgers. It's about two hundred and seventy dollars, two hundred and eighty dollars for tuition fees here in New Brunswick, and it's completely covered by their Pell grants and other grant awards, not loans, for grants in Newark and in Camden. But the most important thing that we were committed to, and I think we have done, in two thousand and seven to two thousand and twelve, compound annual growth rate for tuition was four percent, two point nine five percent. And between two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and eighteen, two point three percent. So we're keeping those costs down, we're doing it by running a very tight ship or a very narrow operating margin, but we have been able to do that. Now, all these students that are coming in, especially ones who may need to work, who may need to supplement their income, need additional student services, whether it's financial, the run to the top of the bridging the gap programs that Nancy and Phoebe put in place on their campuses, or any of the other programs up there, leadership programs, training programs that we have added to make it easier for our students to succeed. And the bottom line, when you look at this, in terms of whether we did, what we said what we're going to do, is to look at the neediest students, our Pell grant recipient students, and say, how do they do compared to the rest of our non-Pell grant students in graduating? It's one of the measures that are made in the Big Ten and the AAU. And I'm going to show you that data for the Big Ten because I can't get it as easily for the peers in New Brunswick and in Camden we have it, but it's a little more difficult to show. Here it is. If you look at the gap between our Pell students and our non-Pell students in graduation in the Big Ten, we lead the Big Ten. And not by a little bit, we lead it by quite a bit. So there's only a five percent gap at Rutgers, whereas if you're at University of Nebraska, it's over fifteen percent difference in graduation rate. And this is not because we have a lower graduation rate. Graduation rate at Rutgers is in the eighties percentile for six-year graduation, which is as good as anybody out there. A little bit below Michigan, but that's, it's really right off the top quartile of our university peers. And the other thing that we're very proud of is that people now calculate the ability of a school to graduate its students at a percentage higher than the predicted rate for that student body. It's measured on the basis of the student body itself. That's now a measure that's used by US News and World Report for rating universities. And here's where we come out. New Brunswick graduates our students eight and a half percent higher than predicted, where our peers are about three and a half percent. Newark is doing it fourteen percent higher, where its peers are minus four percent. And down in Camden, with a very highly needy population, they're doing about one point seven percent better than we. So we're really hitting it on this one. This, I think, says it, one of the reasons why our rankings have improved. Okay, so let's talk about rankings and promise. We looked at Rutgers with the strategic plan, and we said, you know, we're pretty good. We're a lot better than people think we are. You know, we're not punching them on weight. So in addition to doing all these new things, we need to enhance our public promise and the things that we're going to do there. First of all, of course, we had handed to us, which was the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. Make a big deal about it, right? Make sure everybody knows about it. Make sure that the Empire State Building is lit up in Scotland. People ask why. Well, it's because Rutgers is older than this country is, and we should be proud of that. That was a great year for us. Probably the high point, of course, was graduation with fifty-five thousand family and students and one U.S. president. And as you can see up there, that's what he said, "America converges here." It's a message that we've taken to heart, we've publicized, it really caught the eye of the national press, and we got huge publicity out of this. We made a new shield. We bought the Rutgers shield, the Rutgers brand, the round emblem. Didn't have cachet in today's environment, really didn't look right with our Ivy League peers and the best of breed in the Big Ten. So we created a new shield. Most people don't realize this is only four years old. And we all wear it, and I hope everybody's got tons of them, but when I go out and am around with this, everybody figures, well, that's two hundred and fifty years old too. So I'm only, you know, we just say, sure, I'll be right here. We have been helping to shape the national discussion on policies that are important. We've been out there on the university in months, talking about things like DACA, talking about issues that have to do with women's political participation, with gender and ethnicity, and with fighting hate, major involvement with First Amendment rights and First Amendment battles. And we have been recognized as being players in these areas. So when you read the papers about these, we are commonly referred to as we did this, or we're saying that, or we're signing under that. The thing I want to point out here that makes me the proudest is that when we have these demonstrations, like you see on the bottom there, with all these students turning out, we do not have violence on these things. We do not have violence on these things. That's because of the great work that our staff and leadership and our students do all the time, to talk to each other, to keep these ideas around us, because we're already so diverse that this is not novel. So we can have these discussions without having everything flare up, and everybody will just leave us alone. And what we get are these outside parties coming in and saying, "Oh, you should do this, oh, you should do that." Yes, we got it, we got it. This is approved, we got it. We also like to boast about our students. I want to give a shout out to Art Acaciato, who runs our scholarship program for these special scholarships. We are one of the top full white producers ten years in a row. We've had eleven Gates Cambridge scholarships in twelve years, that's a record, multiple gold orders, Schwartz and Truman, et cetera. But the other thing, what the students do themselves, and you know, looking back at the last couple of years, the ads we put in the New York Times, the letters that we've been able to send out about our student groups who have won national or international championships, whether it's in debating, or the Fed Challenge Cup, or the Poll Prize, or the CME Training Challenge, at the national or global level. That's amazing. And then you look at the kids, and you look at those pictures, and you see the diversity of the students that we're putting out there, who are winning these things. That's Rutgers. That's Rutgers. And that's the message that's going out. So getting that kind of public recognition and making people realize what we do is really important. Athletics is part of that. We're now in the Big Ten in the New Brunswick Athletics Program. We'll be full equity members next year. And the program has been doing well. We've got ways to go in football, men's basketball, Sports Illustrated said it was the most improved program in the country this year, which is saying something. Now we've got a few more games, we're looking at it. But if you look this year at wrestling, women's soccer, men's lacrosse, field hockey, women's basketball, all ranked nationally in that top twenty ranking. And it's not just about New Brunswick. You look at Newark, the women's basketball in Newark were the two thousand and nineteen NJAC champions. Men's soccer nationally ranked in D3, it happened down to Camden, two All-Americans from the track team, and golf, eight of the last eleven years, common champions. So it's not that that many of our students play sports, but people see the students who do play sports, and it makes the news. So being in the news for this is something that we have to pay attention to. And I must say, being in the news for this kind of thing for sports, that's a whole other thing that we don't want to do. The other thing we need to do is get the message out, and we need to talk about what Rutgers does. So we contracted for an economic impact statement that we have spread around the state to all of our legislators, to our senators and senate people, the governor's office, showing that Rutgers generates about five point two billion dollars in economic impact for the state every year, about seven dollars of return for every one dollar that the state invests. And it's sort of an aha moment. People, "Well, I didn't know that." You know, "It's just Rutgers." "Oh, I didn't know that." They don't realize that Rutgers, for example, does more sponsored research than every other university in New Jersey, including Princeton combined. As a matter of fact, my other college presidents get online fact for saying that. I said, "You got to stop saying that, right?"
You better.
I better. Don't tell anybody. I'm more proud of it, that's what we do. And that's what people need to know in rankings. If you're going to talk about impact, this is the place to do it. Here's another area that you probably don't know about that I think is tremendously important. This is what Pete McDonough and Kim Manning have been doing, looking at expanding our exposure. Now, two thousand and fourteen, we did very little on social media. Most of your kids are on social media all the time. Most of you are on social media all the time. I don't know, I don't have anything. They don't teach me what to do with it. In two thousand and fourteen, fifty-four thousand followers. In two thousand and eighteen, over six hundred thousand followers. That's faces, eyeballs on Rutgers. You've got to control what they see, but that's a big deal. Here's the one that I like, positive sentiment, if you look at the media coverage, all kinds of media, our average positive sentiment was eight point two out of ten, it was fourteen. I can tell you, twelve was probably two, when they wanted to fire everybody. So I didn't fire everybody but me, but we've got it.
It'd still be a two.
And in eighteen, it's up to nine point five. And frankly, you don't get much better than nine point five in these types of things. And the last one, you know from your drops, that those drops from Pete get longer and longer and longer, right? And these are newspaper and press and everything else articles that cite Rutgers. And it may be that a Rutgers professor did, or Rutgers joined this, or the report from Rutgers was used to do this, or the government cited this from Rutgers from, you can see it right there, from maybe a quarter of a million in two thousand and fourteen to over six hundred thousand, six hundred thousand in two thousand and eighteen. So you need that, you need that visibility. You need people thinking about Rutgers when they're going to ask a question, when they're going to call somebody up for a quote. That means, A, there's somebody at Rutgers that you call, but B, they have the belief that Rutgers has credibility. So when they quote somebody from Rutgers, it means something. So if they quote Rutgers, they quote Harvard, and that's really important. So Pete, you guys have done a great job there. So what does all this mean? Well, it eventually triples down to the rankings. And I'm not a big man on rankings, but I do like to see that between two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and eighteen, that's two years, New Brunswick moved up fourteen positions in US News and World Report. That's unheard of. And it's only pushed out by Rutgers, which jumped eighteen places in the same time period in US News and World Report. Camden is ranked twenty-eighth among all the regional institutions, and it's now moving into the R1 world with this ranking. And I could go on in terms of where our rankings are, but this eventually shows up. So delivering on that enhancing our reputation, which was a key part of our strategic plan, I think we are doing. Next is looking at tomorrow's university. How do we see tomorrow's university, what is it going to look like, how do we get there? Obviously, the biggest thing we did in the very beginning was the integration of UMDNJ, most of it into Rutgers, and we were really fortunate that our current chancellor in New Brunswick, Chris Malloy, was heading up that integration office and really did Yogan's job in getting this job done. We are now ranked nationally between number one and number three in undergraduate health professions education for the last three years, between number one and number three. I think it's number two this year. Four years ago, we didn't have any healthcare education. Just keep that in mind. We had individual schools, but we didn't have them together, they weren't marketed right, they weren't appreciated. We're now seen as one of the top in the country in this area, certainly helping our rankings. And as we move forward, under Brian Strom's leadership, I'm not going to go through all this, but key things that have happened here have been, number one, recruitment of outstanding health sciences faculty and leadership positions across RBHS. Second, the nomination of Rutgers Health, which is putting our clinical faculty into an integrated group practice model. And again, four years ago, we didn't do any clinical practice. Last year, we did over two million patient visits in Rutgers Health, two million patient visits. Successful in renewing the CINJ comprehensive cancer support grant and just getting a clinical and translational service award for twenty-seven million. There were only sixty of these in the entire country. You only get one by knocking someone else off. And Brian Strom and his team were successful in doing that. So we, we're about to try to factor here now for the faculty and this progress moving forward. But of course, the next big step was building on that to form a partnership with RWJ Barnvis. And as I said before, I think this is the biggest single event that we've had here at Rutgers in terms of the long-term impact on the university. This is building a true academic health system with our faculty and our schools as the core, nobody else. We own the academics, we're at RWJ Barnvis, all our students will be trained there, we control the graduate education, we do the research, and help to sponsor it. Obviously, a major financial positive for the university as well, but this was a big deal in seeing where tomorrow's university was going and making it happen. We also have been looking at international partnerships, now that we've got what I think is a New Brunswick and Newark and Camden pieces gelling, starting to reach out again in the international arena, looking for ways to have a presence at the national and international level without a lot of financial exposure. You know that last year, we got the Niaros Foundation Award for twenty-seven million for a program in Greece that will work on agriculture and businesses and food areas as one big program. And this year, we signed a novel and perhaps unique relationship between the entire university of Rutgers and the Republic of La Sanaa, the whole country. This was signed by me as president and by Eric Vissisi, who's on the right there, who is the president of La Sanaa. It's conceived during his visit with me last fall at a football game that thankfully went terribly, so we just have to leave it after. We took everybody back to my house, and we sat in chairs, and we put this program together. We were wondering if it would probably have happened, but we're often running on that, and that's a very exciting exercise. Okay, so now going on to the next column, less exciting in terms of PR, but more important in terms of success, and that is building a foundation for the university. First, of course, recruiting a strong leadership team. I think we've got one of the very best in the business. Many of them are seated around the table right here and are now in positions of running this university in a way that is really president-independent. And I've been asked a lot, what do you consider to be success in your job? When people are interviewing me as part of these leadership development courses, it's one of the questions they would ask. I think the definition of success for a president is when you can get hit by a bus and nobody notices. And I think we are there. I mean, I go off across campuses, I don't know where it's way at anyway, but. I think it is true that we've gotten to the point where this is this man place and knows how to run, knows how to execute, and we've got outstanding leaders who make it happen. Second thing we've done is to move very aggressively to a data-driven management approach. It permeates everything that we do. That's responsibility-centered management. That means that you run something, you get the revenue, you get the expenses, you manage it. And if you can do it well, you can keep the margin. If you don't do it well, we will see it, and you're not getting supported by somebody else. Very important, set forward. Not always popular, but very important. All of my senior leaders have performance-based compensation. That means not bonuses, it's not on top of their salary, means that a significant part of their salary every year is at risk for performance to goals that we to goals that we agree upon at the start of the year and assess at the end. The same thing that you all do in your businesses, novel in at least this institution. The dashboard metrics you see, that's the way we report to you, that's the way we measure. When I got here, we couldn't do an annual close to our budget at the end of the year. Took two or three months after July to close a budget on an annual basis. We didn't know where we were. We were guessing during the year. Now, we have the systems in place to do that every month by the 15th of the month, just what you would expect from your businesses, which we can do here. And I can go on down the list, but we have now a very strong management environment that the people who run this place buy into and now push down to their reports to get more rigor in the system. The next thing is to establish a new normal for fundraising here. Again, when I came in 2012, we were raising a little over $90 million a year. We were two-thirds of the way through a capital campaign and sorely behind the power curve to get there. And we were able to rev up the engine, like Nevin is, came on board, doing that timeframe, and Nevin Kessler and his team built a new foundation, and we're able to close that billion-dollar campaign by the end of 2014 on target and on time. But what I really want you to look at is what happened after that, because what typically happens after a big campaign that stressed the system is that the donations go down and then they remain flat. We took a little dip for '16, and then we've been going up with record years ever since then. And the number to me that tells a tale is this. The last five years that we're looking back now for this strategic plan review, we've raised over $1 billion in philanthropy. That exceeds all the gifts and pleasures in the entire seven years of the capital campaign with the three-year reach back that was tagged onto it. But this is the new normal. This is where we are now. And now at some point in the future, you're gonna have to set your sights on a new capital campaign and challenge the university to reach it. What does that mean for our endowment? Well, look at this. This is the growth rate, the CAGR for our endowment over the period between '13 and '18 compared to the Big Ten. We are number two in the Big Ten, right, with a 9.2% CAGR. What that says is this, our endowment hasn't grown because the markets improved. Everybody's endowment grew because the market improved, but we moved up to number two in overall growth because we have been adding to our endowment. That's how we got from 690 million to over $1.3 billion in our endowment. We're always gonna have market fluctuations, but we need to keep adding to that pot because people 10 years from now need that. It won't help me tomorrow to close a budget, but it's gonna help the people who are in here 10 years from now. And that was another one of our goals for the strategic plan. And of course, none of this works if you're tearing the bottom out of your finances, but we've done this by maintaining very tight financial controls in the university. And the proof of that pudding is that our rating agencies have maintained us throughout this period of time, including our capital construction, at a AA, III, or A-plus level in spite of the fact that the state has got at least two notches of downgrade. So we are now more notches above our state than anyone else in the country. So I mean, it's tough to say there, I can't guarantee you, if the state takes another hit, we're obviously gonna get downgraded. But this is a statement about how they see the stability of the university, the demand for our product, our financial rigor, and our ability to pull the levers if we need to if problems were to begin. We also found early on, with some of our athletic issues and some others that came up, that we weren't doing a very good job of identifying risks. So we really went full bore on this, put in a program for risk management and ethics and compliance, and have that now across the entire university and every element of the university. They have a program that other schools come and look at. How do you do that? How are you getting that to work? And as I tell people all the time, you're not in the business of eliminating risk. You eliminate risk, there's no reward. It's managing risk. It's identifying where the risk may be and putting mitigation plans in and plans if something goes awry, what you will do, and identifying people who own that plan. That is, whose throat are you gonna choke if something happens? And that's what we've done through the entire university. It's really working, really working very well. But this, I think, is the key. This is the least energetic, but it is the most important of all the things that we've had to do. And that is, we've had to completely rip out and replace the administrative systems for the university. We had disparate systems written in software that nobody writes anymore, that didn't talk to each other. No, I can do that to you. You know, finance was written in, we'll have a cobalt portrait of cobalt working all day. So we couldn't patch them because nobody could write it. Basically, we've had to go in and change our financial management system, our procurement system, everything you see out there. When I came, we had 200 different email systems. We now have one. That alone is a huge change in terms of the way we approach business. This hasn't been easy. This is cornerstone. This is what Mike and Michelle and everybody on the staff has been working on. But it had to be done. It's like, you know, ripping the scale off is not fun, but you have to do it, and you have to get it done as quickly as you can. So we are pretty much there. As I said, we can do our closings now on a monthly basis. We know where our grants are, and we have confidence in our numbers. Actually, Brian Strom walked in just before this meeting and told me, "Okay, we finally went through all the monthly numbers for this month for the grants, awards, the grant numbers, and the new submissions." And we agreed. I've heard Brian say that since he's hired. I actually agree. We had to go in one at a time, through what, 13,000 grants, through a little machine, to make sure all the numbers were corrected that we brought over from UMDNJ. We are done. We have a system that when we say, "These are the numbers, these are the numbers," and the chancellor can now look at those numbers and manage with them. They can drive right down to the school, the department, and the faculty member, and they know they're right. So that's a big deal. So I'm not gonna spend any more time on this, just to say thank you to the staff who and the management team who have done this hugely important, hugely important. We still have human resources to go. We still have some worker-student systems to go. It's not done yet, but the major efforts have already been done. And then there's the physical environment. We had to build a new building around here for academics in quite some time. I won't quote the numbers, but I think College Avenue campus had been there 30 years since the last. So we had a lot of work to do. I'm not gonna go through a complete listing, but first thing we needed was a plan. Now, a lot of the projects came directly out of the strategic plan. So the most everything I'm gonna show you, I can show you in the strategic plan where it said we needed to do something. But we also needed a vision that went beyond that, the 15 years from the end of the five-year plan to the next 15 years. And that was the physical master plan for each of the campuses, an integrated approach. Again, not something to sit on the shelf, it's something we test against every time we wanna do a project. What did we say we wanted to do then? How do we wanna use that space? What's the best use? Is it going in the right direction? But then on our individual campuses, research and academic spaces, there's a partial list of the ones that we've done, from big buildings like SAS and the weak engineering school, chemistry and chemical biology still being one of my favorites, to smaller renovations and additions. Student spaces, the HLLC up in Newark, but also the Yard and Sojourner Food Departments and 15 Wash and the Orange College and the building over Douglas, and the list could go on from there. Health sciences spaces just starting to take off now, the ones that have been completed a whole bunch on the agenda for the next couple of years. And community spaces, we now have alumni houses on each one of our campuses for our alumni to back to use, to feel at home, feel like they should be here. Overall, completed construction since 2012, about $2.6 billion. And I would say we're not halfway there. Okay? So it's a long way to go, but compared to what we were doing before, and I have to say that we've been able to do this and tribute to Mike Gower and his team with a very, very careful control of our debt. We have about $2 billion worth of debt, and we keep it there. We take more when we retire it or whether we can get better rates. And the rating agencies understand that. So we've been able to get this done. We leveraged about $400 million worth of building our future bond fund. This wasn't done with trip money. This was done with donations, and it was done with private-public partnerships, leveraging money we could get from elsewhere, and keeping our ratings solid while we've been able to get $2.5 billion worth of work done. We've also been working on the landscape and landscape, not as expensive, but this is what you see when you come in. You see College Avenue. Remember what College Avenue used to look like? Yeah. It's not quite finished yet, but it's a lot better. Putting up the Robeson Memorial and things like that in our various campuses, little things like the bus stop, weather protectors that look good are not inexpensive and the students really appreciate. The hawke singles on George Street and College Avenue that tell students when, they don't always listen. And as Tony and I were just discussing, we haven't had a student struck by a car on those two streets two years now, since those singles went. And, you know, it was like rolling for kids before that, so this is a major difference. So a lot has changed. When I look at this and I look at, seven years ago when I came, we had about 58,000 students. We have now 70,000. We were giving about a little less than 14,000 degrees. We gave almost 19,000 this year. We had a $1.9 billion operating budget over $4.3 billion now. Now, what we talked about was the vesterships, the fundraising, research expenditures, $470 million in 2012, almost $740 million now, and going up. Brian, you just told me you had a 25% increase in the past month.
In the past three quarters.
In the first year.
For the year.
So we're off in line, and that's partially because of improvements, partially because Brian is making everybody aware that they're paying, depends on it. Little things like that. But then the ones that go down, the category for tuition, keeping that down, right, construction. And the one that I still think is gonna have a huge impact going forward, no healthcare visits in 2012, over 2 million and going up this year. So we've done a lot from the strategic plan. I think if you go through it, you'll see that we've hit almost everything that we said we were gonna do in five years. Very clearly, this was a tactical plan in five years. It was not a long-term strategic plan. But we have a lot of things that we have to worry about. We still have huge budgetary pressures. We run a remarkably small margin for a university with a $4.3, $4.4 billion PNL, an operating margin of 1% is, that's what we do. You're looking at it like, whack, but then we've run a 1% operating margin for each of the last three years, and we have to explain that to the rating agencies. They sit down and say, "Well, yeah, you're doing, but your operating margin is too low." I said, "No, we have an agreement with our board of governors that we will keep our operating margin there, and we'll use that money to keep tuition down." That's the plan. And they get it. They get it. And they comment on it, and they say, "Good." Because they know if we really had to, we could raise tuition. It's not a simple little bank run. We really had to, we have other ways to develop, we have other alternative revenue streams that we can do. But this is a huge challenge. Doing all this without damaging the diversity of the university, either socio-economically or ethically, looking at how we engage our alumni, looking at the mix of in-state and out-of-state, we're still way off the mark on that. And there's lots of opportunity there for us to bolster our ability to help kids in the state get a cheaper education. And keeping up with our faculty and the kind of quality of faculty that we want here. So there's lots and lots to do. But I think when I look back at the plan and had the chance to do that in the last few months, I think reasonably pleased that we've delivered on the things we said we were gonna do. So I'm gonna stop there, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Dr. Marchi. First, congratulations to you and your team on a great report and a great improvement and changes. I appreciate all the hard work everyone. Questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I'd like to have a comment. This was a great report. How are we going to disseminate it to the populace of the state and to the legislature? This is what everyone needs to know.
What we're gonna do, first of all, I will give this report as my report to the Senate, which will be published, but we are actually putting together a publication that will be, you know, a formal book that we can send out to everybody, that will cover all these issues, all the areas a little bit more touchy-feely in terms of the focus.
Is there any way this could be streamed, like on a Netflix or something?
I don't know what you'd want in that place.
I don't know. Well, we can certainly think about it. I know that there are some aspects of this that the foundation wants to put into. The problem is that, you know, this took me, what, 45 minutes to do this? And what you really need to do is two minutes, right? And that part.
Thankfully, Bob, it was almost an hour, but that's. All good. We have a couple of questions.
The only person following me is Chris.
We have a couple of questions. Yeah, I'd like to.
Just a quick question. Excellent presentation. The state support now compared to five years ago, and so where do we stand now? And how does it compare to other Big Ten universities?
The state support has gone down every year when you factor in inflation. But you have to understand that the state has been able to keep it flat in nominal dollars at a time when their budget has gone to, you know, gone down, right, into trouble. So that is a statement of support from the state. I have to say that I have not felt any but support from the governors or from the legislators since I got here. A little frosty when I first came in. But the first six months, we've been in a good place. So I have nothing to complain about there. The percentage of our educational budget that's supported by the state used to be 75, 80% back in the 90s. Now it's under 20%. It's not coming back. So we need to look at other revenue sources to make ourselves more and more like a state-related university and less and less like an old-fashioned state university.
We have, Richard. Did I follow you, everybody? President Marchi, that was a wonderful presentation. I just wanna say, I recently been on the tour of the engineering building and chemical buildings. Your efforts are definitely showing, and proof that the students are benefiting is further on the social media report. I know a lot of us here are not on social media, but I just wanted to highlight some of the research or the feedback I've gotten through my own social media. Recently, I've been using the work of the board, the stuff that we're talking about in meetings, the ones that are sort of publicized about. And the feedback that I've been getting from the students who are in my own age group is specifically showing that the more awareness that the students have about the initiatives that the board is working on, that the governors are working on, that workers' leadership is working on, they're taking pride in Rutgers University. There's a common term known as like the RU screw, and the more that I'm advocating for the work that I'm doing, the more it's negating that negative impact. So social media, I don't know about live streaming on YouTube, but in the next five to 10 years, social media will be the easiest and most effective way we can get PBR without running our budget slow. Another thing that really shows the power of social media is, if I'm a student of the Rutgers New Brunswick School, the business school, right? If we hire a student, J.B. Morgan, or Goldman Sachs, or anybody, any company hires a student from one of our campuses, and they share on their social platforms what that school or any of the founding, the surrounding campuses are doing, what that does for us is it spreads that one article to the personal and professional contacts on Instagram, Facebook, LinkedIn, Twitter. And these are contacts that are not just in the industry for education, they're contacts in the industry for business, for media, for finance, for politics, for everything you can possibly imagine. So if you're noticing the 1 point greater than 1 billion, I wouldn't say endowment increase that we've seen, it's because people are taking note of the work that we're doing. And that is the power of social media. That's what I wanna say about that front.
Couldn't have said it better myself. Thank you.
We have, Richard, I think, has given a person that he. Richard, did you, did you have your hand up?
Oh, yes. Uh.
First of all, congratulations on a magnificent report. Our international student admit is impressive too, and Buc-1 is a great place to visit, by the way. I wonder what our strategy is for international, attracting international students, more and more of our peer institutions, including, Brian, my alma mater, the University of California, Berkeley, I very much into that, and I know how important it is to get full tuition-paying individuals. So I just wondered what our strategy is for international students. And congratulations on a magnificent report.
I can comment on that, and I've been trying to do that in the last couple of meetings. International student populations have been dropping in the last couple of years. And most universities like University of California and our Big Ten peers have seen the same thing. I can tell you that the number of international students who are deposited and matriculating at Rutgers this year is up 34%, 34%, which is gigantic. Now, unfortunately, they still are heavily weighted towards China. Why is that? I think two things at least. First of all, we had an international meeting of college counselors, the people who counsel people about where to go to college at Rutgers two years ago. And I think it was high open for most of those individuals because a lot of the new things on the campuses were here, they spent three or four days here, totally immersed. I spoke to them, everyone else on my team did it various times. The second has been the jump in our U.S. News and World Report rankings. And that doesn't go unnoticed, that sort of thing happens, a that many points jump up. So, if the message is out there, but at any rate, we've seen actually a tremendous increase. That worries me, it's not that big a percentage of our overall student body, but I don't want to be too dependent in terms of any one population. We need to see diversification. The area frankly that I'm most interested in increasing is the out-of-state domestic. That's a market that we have not penetrated, that we should be right to do. And as I keep telling my colleagues, we could give a 50% scholarship on tuition to every out-of-state domestic and still make a lot of money. And as a message, it just doesn't seem to get through down to the ranks, but just don't want to give scholarships to out-of-state students, well, hello. So, we're working on it.
I think that.
Just a quick comment to follow up, Bob. And the question, there's really been a very effective marketing group going over to China and India to actually, and a few other foreign countries that have really helped boost the comfort level of the parents of these students that are coming here, providing a lot of information, something that Rutgers Global, or Barbara in my office, has been doing. And we are ramping up the marketing significantly for out-of-state students domestically, places that are so far removed, like Long Island, Westchester County.
Dean, and then Marissa, and then Alan.
Bob, let me join.
And then I'll get to the phone after I get everybody here in the, in the room.
Let me join you on a very comprehensive report. I'm interested in a little bit more flavor on the entrepreneurial side of the university in terms of out-licensing, using, leveraging intellectual property, relationships with the business community, spin-outs and things like that. How's that trend right then?
Yeah, I think we're doing pretty well there. We've started 84 companies in the last 10 years, right, Chris? Yep, 84. I think a higher than normal percentage are still alive and well. Our, the numbers that I look at are the number of licenses and patent platforms per million dollars of research expenditures, and we mark very well to the Orem numbers that you're familiar with. We're in the process now of working with the state to develop a entrepreneur hub here in New Brunswick, and we have 50,000 square feet of tech transfer space there for taking ideas from research and getting over the valley of death after that first round of venture funding. And that's moving along. So, I think we do pretty well. At least the revenues on the tech transfer, they run between $15 million, $20 million a year. Every once in a while, 30 months, you know how that is, it's a hit on one pack. And the really big players out there have been doing this for a long time, and there are a few leading portfolios that are still returning some of their funds, but we're doing very well from there.
I think Marissa Allen, and then Elsie, and then Gene, and then I'll go to the phone. We've got a big agenda ahead, so, Marissa, you want to go ahead?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Marchi, for the presentation. Two points. One, my question was directed to Chris about international students, but I'll ask you after the meeting. The second question, or the second comment was, I just wanted to comment to you on the strategic plan. Oftentimes, reports like these are shelved, but it's really great to see that the initiatives in the plan are actually kind of implemented, so thank you. And also a comment on the enterprise risk management arm. That's really great, especially with current concerns in cybersecurity and how it influences our education institutions.
Thank you.
Alan.
Just a comment. President Marchi, you had mentioned the operating margin of 1% here at Rutgers, and Edgar had mentioned, asked a question about state support. I happen to have friends whose children go to state institutions, one at University of North Carolina, one at UC Santa Barbara. And what's happening at those universities, they're actually cutting classes. So even introductory courses that you would normally take as freshmen, you're not able to get those class to your junior. And the fact that Rutgers and your administration, they will do this without affecting students' academic classes is pretty impressive.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
It's a good question.
Again, yeah, thank you so much for that great presentation, Dr. Marchi. I did just have a question with the, like, enhancing the student experience. So, I know you mentioned the R-U screw, and usually, you know, that entitles like class selection and the help with picking out those classes to make sure you meet those major requirements. Is there maybe any, like, initiative that we have going on that, you know, will help students make sure, you know, they're on the right path to graduating on time?
Sure. Actually, there are two or three things. I'll just touch on two of them. One, there's Course Planner that you can use online yourself to see exactly where you are for your major, what you need to take, how many years it's going to take you to do it if you stay on the path that you're on now. Your advisor can help you with that, but you don't even have to use the advisor, you can go on the online portal, and, or you, it will show you what you need to do for your major. The second thing is that the computerized course schedule is a key issue in making it possible for us to offer the classes that students need to complete a major in a timely way. So we make sure that those courses are offered, not, you know, at 2 o'clock and 3 o'clock so you can't take both of them, or not at 2 o'clock and 3 o'clock and one of them is on cooking, one of them is on, is in bush, or is in Newark or something, which is the way it's working now. It's all done with pencils and papers. But it is optimized to be sure to allow students to make the right choices in the right sequence to get out in the shortest possible period of time. That's what it's all about.
Gene, just very quickly, for the trustees of Open Home, it's fairly political, and I know a lot of people who are in Trenton. I could honestly say that this administration is the first one since Eglavstee who actually understands Trenton, works well with Trenton, and is liked by Trenton, which is what we've needed for a long time. So I want to thank obviously Pete, who I know for, and he knows, that's a fact, and the president of his people, because you've done a really good job, and I'm really very happy for Rutgers and the state, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
If anyone else.